I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start out with the open public forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? You get two minutes. Okay, if not, we'll move on. The next thing is the approval of the agenda. Aaron, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Rob?
No, sir.
Pete?
No.
Julie?
Nothing.
No, Mr. Mayor.
No.
And Jenny?
I would like to add F under consent agenda December 2nd for the truth in taxation hearing.
Okay. If there's nothing else to add on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Rob, seconded by Dale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearings, new business. Ordnance annexing Mitchell and Tiffany Hocker property reading. So we have the reading for that, but is there...
Well, Paul Plaats emailed me about some concerns they had about Hockers hooking up to the sewer, and he said he was gonna be here tonight, but he's not, so I don't know. He talked to you, didn't Troy?
Yep, he talked to me. He was just concerned about digging in Sleepy Hollow, which was the township road. And they were wondering why we don't go to Grant Street.
Well, let's just move on for now, and if he shows... Go ahead and explain, so we have an idea of what he's doing. He didn't want us to dig into the...
Well, Mitch got two bids on...
Yes. Okay, I got two bids on it. You know, the original one, I wasn't there, and they went out to Grant Street, and it was $5,000 more than going into Sleepy Hollow. Well, it's a no-brainer to go to Sleepy Hollow, and it's gonna be dug up for about four hours max, you know, and we're not gonna close off any traffic that needs to get up and down the road. They're just basically gonna dig a hole just enough to connect, and they're gonna pound their way underneath to my place, 'cause I got a crawl space on that side of the house, so I gotta pound underneath to get underneath the foundation into my slab where I can hook up. So, you know, they've done enough digging in city limits here on all the roads, you know, and stuff like that, and they know what they're doing. I mean, I don't see any concerns of putting everything back the way that they were.
Is there any...
Troy, we have an easement.
Troy, what is his concern? What is Paul's concern?
Just from what I talked to him that day, he was here, he was digging up the road and not...
That we won't put it back to snuff?
Back to snuff.
Take them...
And now you... It's jerpy who they're dealing with Hockers, so that's what we have to do, all our work in town.
And we have an easement to go in there.
Yeah.
And I had Aaron review it, and he said we have every right to dig up to that sewer.
The easement is the full width of the road up to the...
Oh, here he is.
Yeah. And then part of the easement is that we put it back like we find it.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Paul, we're just talking about the ordinance annexing Tiffany and Mitch right now, the digging of the road and so on. What's the concern of the...
Okay, so, you know, Sleepy Hollow Road is typically the last one for maintenance, and property on the east side, right on Grant Street there, has been city, and now the Hockers are coming in. So, as a board, we were wondering, does this then become a city street until the southern border of the city properties now? You know, are you maintaining that? And secondly, where do you intend to make your connection for sewer? My understanding is the property, the Hocker property, is already served by city water.
Everything on Sleepy Hollow is.
Somebody confirm that?
Everything on Sleepy Hollow is on city water.
Yep, and so now you'll make a connection for sewer. And so we're wondering, where do you wanna make that connection? You know, there is sewer in Sleepy Hollow Road going south, you know, so you could connect there somewhere, I suppose. Or you can connect out in Grant Street. My understanding, sewer runs on Grant Street, but it's on the north side of the street. So, that's what we're wondering. Where do you wanna make that sewer connection? And who's gonna fix the road? Those kind of things. You know, that's why, if it's a city road, and you're gonna make your connection in the city portion of the road, fine, you guys deal with it, you maintain it, and you, you know, in the future, all snow, graded, whatever. We're just curious what your plan is for that street from this point forward.
The streets... Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, the street remains yours. There's an easement for that sewer into that street, into Sleepy Hollow.
Okay.
So he's exercising the right to put his sewer on the connection that's in Sleepy Hollow, rather than go underneath Grant Street, because it is a legitimate easement for utility. And then he will pay to put the road back the way it was. But you're... My understanding is you'll still maintain it. We're just... He's just using the easement, that access, that is right, that is on that road.
Okay, so that's the deal, it's an easement, and it'll be returned to its...
The state it's in now, yep.
Hopefully. What we were wondering then is, you know, now that you have city properties on both sides of the street, does this then become a city, a city street until the southern border of the city?
That one's on, Aaron.
Well, that would take a little more research. What we've found so far was the public utility easement, that's the exact same width of the street.
Right.
Twenty... Yeah, 22 feet.
So it's not terribly wide over there. So it would take some more research in the land records to figure out how that roadway was created, to see what would need to be done if that was to get turned over to city or...
Sure.
The entire road? Are you talking about just until the end of the Hocker property?
Yeah, the easement only extended, do you remember how many feet it was?
It goes up to like Merlin Benson's house.
Okay.
Yeah, the sewer is already in, is already in Sleepy Hollow Road, all the way to all the Bensons. So that's where your easement is.
You're trying to determine whether the south end of Mr. Hocker's property would now be the line where the city ends. Do we maintain the street from Grant to that point, is what you're trying to find?
That's what we're wondering. Now, because it's now city.
I see your logic, yeah.
It seems like a legitimate question.
It's also, you know, his access. That's their access for the county, so...
Yeah, I think there are some practical issues to be worked through, such as the narrow width of the street being difficult for city equipment and...
This street isn't wide enough for our equipment.
Right, right.
And then, do you just, if you're maintaining it, do you just stop right at the...
Yeah, that's just gonna make it worse for you guys.
I don't know. So there are some practical questions, I think probably staff could further explore.
That's got an idea.
Paul?
Yep.
I know you, but you don't know me, probably, but anyway. We've had some other connections down there, and as I recall, like Walter Aaron's house, and...
Stoles are on, Stoles are on sewer. I don't think Walter is.
Yeah, and that White House, where Randy Strasman's house.
Randy reseated back to the county.
At the front, okay. But anyway.
Tuffy's house is on.
I remember when we tore up that road to put that in, we had a bad time getting it done, because they kept asking for more, and more, and more, and more. I think we must have gravelled that road for the township about six times before they signed off.
Yeah, this is...
No, but I mean, this is, yeah. I mean, I've been a long time down here, and so I can assure you that the road would be restored. I mean, because I think you guys have a say-so when you think we've brought it back, don't you? I mean, kinda. That's the way you...
That'd be a typical obligation of the easement.
Yeah, but I remember there was a lot of stuff put in there just so we could sign off on that, on that, on the end of that road there.
It should be whoever's opening up that.
Right, yeah.
Who plows it right now?
We do.
They hire it out.
What goes in there?
We subcontracted lots of it, they graded, and they plowed the snow.
They plow with a grader? Do you know what they...
Yeah, typically the grader. You know, when there's a lot of snow, they'll come up early in the morning with a pickup, just blaze a path through there so people can get in and out before the grader comes, but that's how we handle it. Frankly, I wish you guys would take the whole thing from us. Personally.
Yeah, well, there's...
We can annex all those properties on. Yeah, we could.
Yeah, once we start annexing people, we'll just start complaining.
There are township residents that like things the way they're hocked on.
Yes.
Yep.
That's just what I, you know, I wish you guys would just take this off our hands and annex the whole damn thing, but that probably won't be very popular.
You give them, you talk, talk to the people.
The guy that Mike Paul said that.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what we're wondering. I guess that's all that I have. Apologize for my appearance, but...
Oh, you're fine, you're fine.
We had a late tool call this afternoon, so...
I think right now it looks like they will be going in with the easement, and then the road will be put back, you know?
And then we just need to...
Well, they know we're not happy.
And we just need to make sure we let them know, you know, is, are we gonna own that, maintain that first, however many feet, or is it all on them? So that's what we still...
Yeah, we'd like clarification on that, if, you know, if this now becomes a city street until the southern border, so to speak, of the city there.
How many feet of road are you talking about?
It's the Hocker property.
I don't wanna go there, but...
Yeah.
I don't either.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's just the whole thing of the city, like we said, even...
We have a lot of trouble.
How would we get in there to even maintain it is the tough part. But I know what you're saying, for future, going forward, what are you responsible for, what are we responsible for in feet?
I think we, we'll get, we'll get back to you. That's something we have to discuss here.
You know, if you have legal opinion or whatever, that's fine. We just need to know.
Okay.
And quite frankly, we're gonna become two of our grader anyway.
Yeah.
And we gotta develop over time, getting turned around on our grader.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Down on the end, and it's a, the snow blows in there on the southern, and...
Oh, that, those last three houses.
Goes in there twice, last year, and push the snow, you know. It's something that we have to deal with, so...
All right, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks for hearing us.
You should talk to the farmers.
Thank you.
Give them a few rows of corn down there.
Okay, so the ordinance, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanna follow up on that. So is council wanting staff to further look at what would need to happen, or...
I don't want anything to do with that road.
I don't either, but I think we need to answer their question. I believe it's still gonna be theirs to maintain, is what I think you'll probably find out fine.
I don't want anything to do with it.
It's the worst part of that road, is that first part. It's, it's, it's a washboard all your...
One big frost boil, yeah.
Well, the problem is, if the city limits go to the end of their property, aren't we responsible for the...
Well, I would wanna see how that was, again, how was that...
Right.
Written up. Dedicated or made into a public roadway. And then the other thing is, you know, how much width does the city need? You know, 22 feet?
Can you check into that for us?
What's the normal width of a, a minimum width for a street?
Usually 40, isn't it?
Maybe we take the total of the street that's there now, and what they're paying to have that street plowed each time, and we divide it out by what our responsibility is.
Like we do with Grant Street.
And we call share that with them. We just pay our way, because Paul just said it, even their own equipment is getting in there as a pain. So where would we go? Where are we gonna, back in, and then push it out? No, we would push it south, and then we're grading doing the whole road. It just doesn't make sense. Maybe that would be the way, just look at prorating the amount of street that we have, and just call sharing with them.
We've had a lot of problems with width.
Jenny, how we deal with Grant and the county?
That road is horrible.
All right.
They didn't wanna give us any width on that road, the people that live there.
Which one of them?
To be honest.
One and 33. That's a county-state aid highway, yeah, 'cause they get state money.
You did the same thing going the other way.
With the township, yeah.
I don't think...
When somebody septic tank or something went to heck, they wanted to work on the city, and the other people wouldn't hear of it, because...
All right, just moving along here, do we want to propose that they send us the bill for that street, and then we pay our portion of it based on...
I would, I agree.
I could second that.
I would consider, I'll move that.
Okay, motion made by Rob to split that bill, whatever proportion would be the city's with the township.
They still have...
They would still be maintained.
Are we gonna get into the mess of who owns that part of the road? Just leave it. They still have it.
It's a thousand feet long, we're paying for 80.
Yeah.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second? Seconded by Dale. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Talking about just snow plowing?
Yeah, yeah.
Not, not grabbing.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
I think it would be everything.
Everything.
Call share maintenance of the road.
Yep.
Our portion. Our portion, yeah.
Yep.
That's motion.
That was my motion, yes.
Still second.
All right, still stagnating. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Do you wanna vote?
Now, are we second reading?
Should we vote the ordinance?
What's that?
We have to have a motion on the second reading of the ordinance.
Now, we wanna do the actual...
That's what I was going to next, is the ordinance annexing.
Not a bad to take over the cost of the road.
Motion made by Julie to annex it, seconded by Rob. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye. Say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I'm just seeing if you guys are paying attention. All right.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Good.
Did we say the budget was going up like by 50? No, I'm...
58.
Welcome to winter, Mitch.
Too late, too late. Hey, I'm a lifer.
Is everything south of Grant Street? Was that...
Okay, come on up. City chamber cleanup day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mitch.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mitch.
Good evening. I am just here on behalf of the chamber for the citywide cleanup. It is scheduled for September 21st from 2:00 to 4:00, and we were here last time, and it was suggested that we come at this meeting and see if we can add this to the city's budget, instead of a chamber member having to come each year to present it, if this is something the city is willing to share with the chamber.
And what's the, what was it, like 300 bucks?
I have it here. It was, it was a total due of 53250, but we split it 50/50.
Okay.
Up to...
You, you guys did 175 last year.
Okay, so we approve up to 300, so...
So does somebody want to make a motion, let's say, we just add this to our budget?
I'll move that we add this as a line item, Jenny, to our budget.
Up to 300.
Up to 300.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Rob, seconded by Julie, to just go ahead, put $300 in the budget for this every year, and then we'll split the cost with you. Any further discussion?
My only question is, if, if the cost changes, we need to, then we need to bring it forward again, correct?
Always.
If our half exceeds 300.
300, then we need to, okay. I just wanted to make sure that I brought back the right notes to the chamber.
Okay. That should be good.
All right, thank you.
Call the question.
Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Okay, resolution reallocating debt service funds. Jenny, you had some...
Yeah, some of these are paid off. The 2003-1 and the 2005-1 are, are projects. The 2003-1 is the East Edition project. The 2005 is Grant Street, no, Brown Street, I'm sorry. We cash flowed those projects. We never bonded for them. We never sold bonds for them, so the money's just coming in, and this would...
That's what I like to hear, just...
Yeah, it's just coming in, yeah. And so I...
But it's going out just as quick.
And the 2008 fund just got, no, 2002's been paid off. The 2008 fund has just been paid off, so I wanna close those two out. I would like to close 2003 and 2005 back into the utilities and general fund where the money came from originally. Any more assessments that would come in on these funds would get put back into the utility funds. Of the 2003 fund, I did use that 54,000 in general fund monies to off...
2002 fund you're talking about?
2003-1.
That's 87,000, but...
Yep, and only 54,000 of it is general fund dollars.
Okay, oh, okay.
And I use that to offset, as a revenue to the levy, to offset the levy sum this year, because it's money that we will be putting in the general fund that we didn't have in there before. And that was based on cost percentages of the projects. I went through and, and took the totals of the funds, and then I divided them by the percentage, and then I just applied that to the amount in the fund. So it wasn't a real complicated formula. But anyway, yeah, if you wanna do that, we can close out some of these funds that are no longer...
So the funds, the 2002, you have 54,000 in there, 2005, 78,000. That would go back to the utilities, or is that...
2002-1 will reallocate 29,000 to 2008-1, 'cause there's a deficit in there.
Okay.
2003-1 will go 54,000 general fund.
73.
Yeah, 8,000 electric, water 11, sewer 13, and then the 2005-1 will go 7,000, 7,800 water, 70,000 sewer, because that were the cost percentages of the project.
Do they have to go back into water and sewer?
No, you can, you can allocate wherever, if you wanted to use all 2003-1 to offset the levy.
Well, I'm just wondering, how much money, you know, the reserves that we have in there are sufficient at this time, correct?
Right.
Yes.
In our reserves?
I agree.
And do we wanna keep stacking money up? If our reserves are okay right now, do we wanna keep putting money in there if we can help offset the...
And that 2005-1 is what total again? 87? Okay.
2005 is 78.
78.
78, oh.
2003 is 87.
I've got no problem with 2003, 2005, 1, 78,000. Just if our, if our reserves are sitting good...
They were good last time I looked.
Yeah, Ken said they were in good shape.
Can you re, okay, any time during the year?
We can. We could, if you wanted to potentially use it towards the levy, offset the levy, we could put it all in the general fund, and if you change your mind, we can transfer it back out into the utility funds. Absolutely.
We could also put it in a holding and then spread it out over several years, 'cause we got nine, you know, we got potentially nine years we gotta cover.
We could.
Yeah.
You know, we could do that and divvy up a little bit each year to offset a levy each year.
Yeah, instead of having a big giant...
I like that option.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather have it as a rainy day.
I could put it in the money market as a levy reserve fund.
So, I mean, 'cause we're gonna have to come up with that. Let's, you know, make it less painless.
So we could take that 78 and put it in a market and label it as levy reserve.
The 2005 or the, the 2003 fund has general fund monies in it.
The 2005 fund, if we set that aside and draw...
What, 80? How much is that?
I think we're in agreement on the 2003 fund, how you have it.
Okay.
It's the 2005, we're talking about, that's the total, 78, taking that and setting it in the market.
That'll offset for five years.
To offset for going forward.
Do you want me to put it in the money market then as a levy reserve type fund?
Can we take any of the other ones?
I would think so.
We're taking 54,000 out of this one already.
And that's going in general, and the rest is going back into sewer, it came out of water.
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
And that 54, 173 is going to...
You're taking some of that to pay off this, so there'd be roughly 25,000.
That'll offset at least five years on that other issue.
Could we take what is left of these other, I mean, the 25 out of 2002, and, you know, you had 54 going in the budget already, that'd give us another 30, 40,000 that we could put...
You can do whatever you want.
That 2000...
I was just wondering about setting it aside to help offset those yearly payments.
But that 2002 is going into the 08, because we're running a deficit in there, so we...
But only 30,000.
Right.
Still leaves us 25,000.
Oh, I didn't get that, okay.
The bottom, it explains how it's getting...
Right now, we're levying for this year. We'll have to bump up. I don't wanna give a percentage, but we're gonna have to bump up for this year, 'cause it's higher, but it'll stabilize after that.
Yeah.
So this will offset that jump this year, and then we're holding that. We could, we might be able to get five or six years out of that.
Pending, you know, we have another street project coming, if any of that gets...
I'm just saying to cover that other shortfall, you know, and I, five years of that, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
I mean, just to not have to, for that, I mean, for streets and other stuff, you know, I like that idea.
Okay, so do we need to change anything in this resolution reallocating it?
Well, I'll have to retype it, 'cause this isn't...
Okay.
This is all wrong.
The motion is to reallocate as per Jenny's notes, right?
Reallocate the reallocations.
So you wanna put the balance of the 2002-1 fund and the entire 2005-1 fund...
Yes.
Into a levy reserve fund in the money market.
And the balance of the, well, you've got 54,000 that you were taking on already out of the 2003, the rest of that...
You want all of that to go in there too?
Not in the general fund, just the balance of that, the roughly 25 or whatever...
Right.
To go into this other money market account that we could draw out of to help make that...
Give me a minute to write this down.
That gives about 126, that's six years.
So really, the only thing left is that 54, 173 that you've already got in the line item of the budget. All the other monies will go from the three funds to the levy reserve.
And 2005-1.
Instead of being one big wallop this year, let's spread it out over to help...
And maybe by then it'll resolve, and we won't have to.
Yes.
Less general fund to money market levy reserve. All right.
And, you know, hopefully it makes a lot of money on that money, and...
Yeah. All right. So then you'll come to us next, next month with that?
Yeah. No, you can pass it.
Or do you just want the amended version right now?
I'll just type up what, the right one.
Make a motion, we adopt the 2020, or excuse me, the resolution paying off the funds as per Jenny's notes that we agreed on on the table.
Yeah.
I'll second that motion, which is...
And the creating of the slush funds, you know.
Second that, which is, don't say that. I'm not seconding that.
There are no slush funds, there are no...
You should see the look on Aaron's face right now, it's priceless.
I can't wait to type these minutes.
I'll second the motion that basically takes all of 2002, 2005, and all but 54, 173 out of 2003, and puts them in the money market for the levy reserve.
Perfect.
Thanks, Rob.
All right. So we have a motion made by Dale, seconded by Rob. Is that how it was?
Correct, by Rob.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Hopefully there's not, but if so, I'll entertain the discussion. Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution adopting the 2020 proposed...
Nope, 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 2007-1.
Oh, okay, resolution paying off...
Got any money there?
There's not a lot. That's an electric fund. I can't remember what the balance.
Let it just flow into electric, I guess, though.
So this is just, because, because we're still making payments on 2007-1, we're gonna call it now, and then, that's a different process, so we couldn't include it in with this resolution.
Oh, gotcha.
And how much was that?
180,000 is principal.
And we're gonna be paying off?
Yep.
Nice, okay.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Rob, seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we will get to the resolution adopting the 2020 proposed budget. And again, this is just proposed. We'll need to set up a time to have a work session to go over that budget.
Yeah, Melissa and I both did.
And...
And, and we always set it a little bit higher, because we can never add...
We can always go down, and we usually always try to...
No, oh, he left, I hear, he was working, he was hurt.
Nobody else was not.
We all got that.
It was like last Monday.
I wasn't even here then.
I know.
All right, so we were looking at, um, roughly, um.
You all got it, okay.
Eight. That's why I brought these ones, are we looking at about a seven percent increase or difference?
Uh, in the budget or the levy?
Oh, fourteen.
Fourteen in the levy.
Levy is fourteen.
Okay, fourteen percent increase, yeah.
Which is a hundred and six thousand.
And ninety-six difference. So, last year, our budget was seven twenty-five one eighteen, this year, the proposed again is eight twenty-six seven seventy-one fifteen. And again, we'll have a work session to go over all of this and make adjustments.
I bring my red pen.
I already have it ready for you.
I like you.
Is there, um, a motion to, um, approve the proposed budget at this time?
So moved.
Motion made by Dale.
Second.
Seconded by Gray, uh, Mark. I'll get it, yeah. I need his name to hand him, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion, if not, we'll, uh, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Do we want to set the?
Yeah, let's set, uh, the date to go over this, and when, so December second is when we have to have it certified?
Yep, the fifteenth is certified, but the second is a true to taxation.
Yeah, we'll probably take two meetings or so.
Probably will.
Come on, Pete.
No.
I bring my green marker to the table.
But, but is that money keep flowing in like you say, or you're on Easy Street?
It's going faster than.
Easy Street, yeah.
Do we want to set it up for October fifteenth?
Sounds good.
It's a Tuesday.
Or does Monday nights work better?
As long as I get read.
Let's say Monday night, we're used to meeting on Monday nights, it seems to have worked pretty good.
Uh, the fourteenth is Columbus Day.
That'd be the fourteen, October four.
We're open.
We're open, okay.
Um, do we want to start earlier or seven o'clock?
Earlier.
Earlier?
Five would be nice.
Six.
Six?
Yeah, it's supper, I mean, you know, I don't get up before nine in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, start without me, if I, if I can rearrange, I will, but that's all right.
Six o'clock on the fourteenth?
Yeah.
And I understand you guys have put in a full day, I mean, you know, I understand.
Just give me the, all the funds.
Set it whenever you want, I'll be there.
No, no, I mean, you know.
Go where Kenny's from.
Yeah, I won't make it here then. October fourteenth at six P M.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, um, parking on High Street, um, I don't know if you're familiar with that, down by Sibley Estates and by the nursing home.
Were you ever embarrassed by?
I don't know what's happening.
By what?
Not, you almost made it through.
Call mine.
Okay, anyway.
Is that Lucifer, or what are you watching there?
We don't have a city map up here, do we? Anyway, by the nursing home and by Sibley Estates, yeah, it would be nice to be able to point this out.
We should have a city map up here.
If everybody's familiar with it, when you drive in, you have parallel parking on the nursing home side, and then we have a dead end street, and then we have, uh, a street, partial street, a half street on the Sibley Estates side and across from there. Uh, right now, none of that is yellow, there's parking on both sides. The issue we have is during the winter, um, it's, it's terrible getting in and out, uh, for the city plows, it's difficult. Uh, the issue we have with Sibley Estates is that there's not enough parking, when the building was built, they require a half parking stall for each, each unit, uh, so we have like eleven, twelve parking stalls there. Now, they require a stall and a half if you're gonna be doing it, but anyway, the problem is, we have more cars than we have parking spots, and we're trying to help, I, I mean, the city is having an issue with falling snow, I know Gordy, and he had good reason to be upset. Uh, when you come in, he would have to come and turn right into the nursing home's parking lot, which would also ridge up for anybody that was parking on the dead end, where you'd have four or five cars parking on that dead end. Um, and those were typically people that were at Sibley Estates, and then on the other side of that street, on the south side of that street, there might be a couple of cars there too, so you had to squeeze between all of that and get around. What we're, we're wondering is how we can alleviate that, um, and, and it's tough, because we want to be able to have people parking at Sibley Estates, um, yet we want to be able to let the city clean that out properly, because it's, it's a mess all year long, and you can't get that cleared out. And, um, uh, one proposal was just to stop that dead end street, put something there, no parking along that, and possibly yellow on the south side, well, that would alleviate all the problem going in and out during snow removal, but that would also take six spots from parking, which is, um, and we have people that are seniors and.
Yeah, could we do a snowy emergency type of thing?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is that could we do at, maybe for the winter, because people don't always get their cars used, maybe that dead end street, you know, we say no parking from November first or November thirtieth through April fifteenth or April thirtieth, where no one can park on that dead end street at that, during the, during the winter months.
So, then where do they go?
Well.
First come, first served. I mean, I mean, it's tough, I mean, unfortunately.
So, is there enough space on the sidewalk curb area by Sibley Estates to allow temporary winter parking for, for the snow route?
Are you talking, okay, on the curb area, on the south side of the street, right now, they park there.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if you allowed, and if Sibley Estates agreed to allow them to park their vehicles on the lawn of residents, that we would not enforce a parking on the lawn, lawn ordinance from the period of one November to one February, while we had a snow emergency route, we'll call it just for argument's sake. We're gonna tell them they can't park on the street, but they can, if the owners are willing, let them park on the curb up on the, the grass as a temporary solution, because they don't have a parking lot, big enough parking lot, correct? Other option would be, we own the land behind them.
No, the nursing home.
We own, well, that's right, we own the road, the road through.
So, we don't have, we don't own that property to the back, I'm gonna be talking to the.
That was one of the things that, you know, a few years ago, we're talking about, what do we do on storm nights? You know, and there's people that don't park in their garage, and they park in the driveway and one on the street, and, you know, take the, you can't park on your front, front lawn ordinance off the books from November one to February one, and encourage them to park it up on their, you know, pull up their driveway and park on the lawn.
They'd have to go over a curb to do that.
Just ask.
Yeah.
It's an insurmountable curb, dude, though.
Yeah, the, the other option would be similar to what he is saying, is that they do access the dead end, but then we have them all turning onto our lawn, but they would be, then we'd have to keep that open for, for bike parking.
It's just an option, it's just a thought idea, so. But I, I like the snow route.
Yeah.
I go to the nursing home a hell of a lot.
Do you?
And it's a pain in the ass in the summer, let alone in the winter, especially when a semi is trying to back in there. They got those cars there, he's got that fifty-three foot trailer.
Yep.
It's just merciless, and, uh, not only that, but at the end of the road, they tear it all to hell with those trucks, because he's cranking his wheel and he's not moving to get it.
Our parking lot gets tore up too.
Why can't we extend that street up to Brown Street?
We could, but they can't, there's no goal to.
We could.
I mean, to me, that should be that, and we talked about that with that water drainage and everything, and to me, that would solve a lot of problems. It'd clear that all up in there. But I don't know who owns that piece of land, if it's.
Well, we have an easement, city has an, do we have an easement, or do we actually own?
We have a lot of street.
It's a plowed street.
All the way to Brown, you know.
So, we could do that, I think, what was the estimate on that, a hundred fifty, oh, okay.
Well, that was putting sewer and all that, I'm just saying, put, cut it out, put the blacktop in.
Or just gravel it.
Troy, might, do you have any suggestions?
I've been thinking about that, you know, you can't really park on the lawn, because then you get April, that's gonna be.
That's the problem.
And then you try to get the truck up there.
Even the, the early snow removal, sometimes they sink in.
You know, and back to that too, I swept down High Street the other day, and I got down there, and there was no place. I kinda went in, I kinda went in Sibley and then kinda right-hand backed out of there just to, to sweep that too. You know, I like the, like you said, that yellow on that one curb, but then you're losing all those spots.
And I feel, but, I mean, we're talking about seniors that.
I know.
If, if that was an apartment full of twenty-somethings, fine, you gotta walk through.
Well, senior and disabled, but, I mean, you're talking disabled.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's.
We definitely don't want to take their spots away, but what would that gain us if we, if you, if we extended that road through, you'd just plow right through then, right? And we'd be good.
Then we could have.
Yeah.
At the time you put that in, I'm assuming we would maybe see what, you know, was in the budget that, you know, according to the county, if, if we could put another parking lot to the south of that street where people could pull in. That would alleviate.
You suggested no water and sewer, but you definitely left some storm sewer.
Yeah.
That would fix, that would fix a lot of problems in that area too.
All in one swell sweep. So, who's parking on the south side of the nursing home the most, is that just visitors to the nursing home, or is it employees?
No, the employees park in the back.
They got that, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it is just visitors then?
Either that or people from Sibley Estates.
I would say that people in the nursing home don't use all those spots, but I don't know how you take them away. Say.
We're going to approach, we're, we're gonna approach the, um, nursing home and see if there's any way we can get some, lease some parking spots or something from them, but. The other alternative is to try to buy the land behind our building, which I'm sure they would sell, again, that's gonna be a county issue, we'd have to contact them and see if that's something they'd be willing to do, and then we could put a parking lot in the back of our property.
Or, or limit visitors to the parking, you can't.
Well, you could put, you know, that, i- if we had that extra parking area, whether it's on the north side of the building or on the west side of the building, you could put the yellow all the way down that street, because when you're plowing, even if we have everybody off the end of the road, you're still, you know, you're not getting that clear shot.
You gotta go somewhere with it. You know, and I was gonna say to putting on a different hat, the kitchen's on the back side, that west side, if you had to get a fire truck down there during the day, that wouldn't be, you know, because like I said, they're parked here, parked here.
That is a mess.
It is a total mess. We need to open that screen up.
I think so.
Well, that would, you know, you know, if that's something we want to do, that's something we'd be looking at, but there's a process to go through, and it certainly wouldn't be done until next year, but, um, right now, I'm looking at in two months, what can we do? Um, we need to open that up, I mean, the, the dead end has to be closed off.
Yeah, I think Oscar's gonna put no parking signs and then run a chain.
Well, he's gonna have to have that chain removed if he's pushing snow, because they go straight off that road.
That's why they wanted a chain, because then they could take it down.
They can just take it off and push it and.
Right.
Put it back up.
Then the other question would be, what do we do with the south side of the street, yellow or, or not?
I don't think you can take the spots away.
I mean, it would be really difficult. Well, this year, that would alleviate a lot of problems getting them off the end of the street.
I think that's the biggest solution right there, it's just, you can't park at the end of that thing and block the snow route.
Okay.
See what happens in the spring.
Yeah, and then, um, we're gonna do some talking, I'll, I'll contact the administrator and see if there's some way we can maybe do something with that, um, but yeah, Sibley Estates will have to be looking at a possible parking lot, whether it's in the front or.
Who does have Sibley, who owns Sibley?
Sibley County.
Sibley County does, okay, that's, okay.
And it, it's a section eight building, I mean, it's important, there's two buildings, Sibley East and West, one in Henderson, identical to this, and they have the identical problem, they have no parking. But, we need to get something done, because we're getting more and more people and vehicles, and it's causing more of an issue for the city. So, all right, well, so what we're saying right now is to put the signs out, now, will that be, I, I imagine year round, if you're concerned about fire trucks getting in there.
Yeah, but you're still jamming up that, and then that south curb too. But, I guess we'll see, we'll get the, no parking on the end and see how that clears up the, the jam up out there.
Okay, and we'll see what we can do on our end and.
Want to ask city staff to kind of brainstorm some workable solutions? But, you know, maybe we can't visualize sitting here, but, I mean.
Yeah.
Take a look at it, yeah.
We have time, we still have two months, nothing's really going to change that much in, in that amount of time, I mean, if there's some better options, and we may have some more information on our side within that time span too.
I often think of those trucks going in there, if there was a way to go around the whole back end there, but now that they put that clinic there.
There was at one time, that would have been nice. I like the, putting the road through, but, you know, if we're going to do it, we need to do it right, and it could, it's needed.
Yep, it's needed.
All right, so then, at this point, we're gonna look at some city options, or, or see if the city has any other options, but for sure, we'll be blocking that end off come this fall.
There's about four cars that park.
Yeah, I know, and we need time to talk to those people and figure something out for them. So, that's something we can hold off on until maybe end of October.
With the, with the building brainstorm.
Yeah.
And their help, where they park that as well, I don't know where all those people are with that.
I don't know either, and that's, I have not, you know, I'm talking about this, but I haven't even talked to.
But in the evening, it's probably open, you know.
Oh, there's, there's a lot of times, there's spots in there, but temporarily, even just, just for the winter would be nice, or during storm, something, but yeah, I mean, otherwise, there's nowhere for these people to be parking. All right, that's what I had on that. Summer hours.
We had summer hours for the last three months, and, uh, when we first discussed it, you guys talked about maybe making them permanent, so I put them back on the agenda, the staff loves them, and so.
Has anybody had any feedback from the community?
Community feedback, anything?
I've not heard anything.
I mean, we even had, I thought, if I put this on Facebook, we're gonna get all kinds of fun about it, but we didn't, everybody seemed happy about it, so, which was really weird, but.
So, do we need a motion to make that year round? Or do we just go with that?
Well, you can make a motion, and it's official, I mean, and if there's ever a problem, we can, it's not like we can't.
Yeah, we'll revisit it, so just.
Motion made by Rob, continuing full time.
Second.
Seconded by Mark, um, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Don't do that to him, you'll get him really mixed up then.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Aye, it's two of us, sorry.
All right, um, the next thing we have here, city lot.
Um, I was approached by Bert Hunnell, he's looking for a lot to build a house, um, he's interested in maybe the lot at two oh-two North Hennepin downtown, he's looking for something more downtown, closer to their facility, and I said, well, I don't know what it costs, so if you guys give me a price, I will let him know.
Which of the two lots, is it the one up higher or the one down lower?
The one down lower, John Woods owns the one up higher.
How much, how large is that lot?
It's at least fifty feet or close.
Fifty by a hundred and fifty, I think is what, pretty much all the lots down there.
Not too wide.
And how large was the lot that we sold last month?
That was a lot bigger.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Because he was kind of bummed that lot, that's all, of course, everybody wants it now.
So, we're looking at a price, are you talking twice the size, the other lot was twice the size?
I would say it's twice the size, the one we sold, Ambrose, yeah.
Do we have any money stuck into that lot?
Yes.
We probably do, but I, Pete maybe remembers, that's long, that's probably before I even worked here.
Thirty thousand dollar area.
On that one too?
No, that was Pony Pete's house, that didn't cost that much.
I, I told Jenny, I thought, I thought the place was worth between four and forty-eight if I were to buy it, but as I look at it across the, the, across the street, I, I don't know, I don't want to offend anybody, but it leaves a lot of, uh, and, uh, I, I just have a, Metro San has five thousand dollars or so to hook up a sewer and stuff like that, so I, I think four thousand is a fair price, but you guys do whatever you want, you can sell for a dollar for all I.
Half the size.
Well, yes, you do care, you wouldn't have been here tonight, Pete.
Half the size of the other lot, it's half the size.
Yes, I said he owns five hundred bucks.
But I, I think location means a lot.
That one was worth five.
One's, one's in a better residential section than the other.
And we're getting no tax returns on that at all right now.
So Dale said, uh, you know, half the lot, half the size, oh, I'm sorry.
Jim, how is Jim?
Welcome, Jim.
So. Come on, Greg, what did, no.
You started it.
What, Todd, you were saying, half the lot, half the size?
Yeah, I made the motion, we sold the lot for twenty-five hundred.
Okay, there's a motion made, and seconded by Dale, is there any further discussion?
Sorry.
Any further discussion?
Mark and Dale, okay.
Not, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will let him know, now, this doesn't mean he's actually a hundred percent buying it, he just wanted to know how much.
What we want for it.
Okay.
And if he balks, just tell him, hey, the sewer hookup's already there, so.
Right.
You know, and.
I don't think he will.
Maybe that is something we should look at, and any other lot that we have, maybe we need to set a price now, so that when they come in, we've already established a price based on whatever, so maybe we need to look at some of these other ones.
Yeah, we do, we have a few, there's some on Eighth Street there, and, um.
Because it's kind of silly, we're coming in here and shooting these out without a lot of primary reason.
I don't know, you know, it's like buying a house, it all depends where it is.[1734.11]
Yeah, right, location, location, location.
Okay.
Okay, hog facility. Uh, the reason that's on there again is that, um, there wasn't a decision made yet, um, by the county, and I'm just wondering, has any other people had feedback from the community? I, I have. I've had people approach me saying they didn't want, they were concerned.
Oh, yes, I did hear.
And I just thought, uh, we had talked about a possible letter last month, um, and we said we're gonna hold off, so, um, do we want to do anything at this time before the next meeting? Or if not, um, we move on.
I just had one farmer who lives out of town to the south. Said we have to watch it because he has hogs on his farm, and if people start complaining, then he's done, so.
Some of the concerns that I heard were that, well, this is going to affect housing, could affect people coming into our city.
Mile and a half out.
Where?
Ten and fifteen.
Yep.
Harry Slut's another one.
Don't smell them at all. And it's an older style barn, and you don't smell it all in town.
My thought is that if, and, and people within the city limits are entitled to go and voice their opinion at the county hearings if they want to, I, because it's outside of the area that we even have any.
Jurisdiction in.
Jurisdiction at all, I'm not real comfortable stepping outside that. I think if individuals have a vested interest, I think they should go. They should, and, and they can go on any number they want to. But I'm just not.
We shouldn't stick our nose into something that's not our business, is what I feel.
It is our business, though.
It's not outside our jurisdiction.
If this, if the smell affects our city, and I'm not saying it's going to, but I'm just saying it's worth a discussion that we're having right now, then, you know, two years down the line.
Smell affects our city.
I would, I would say that if we, um.
That's even gone.
I'd say it's.
The smell affects our city.
I'd say as a.
If the smell affects our city.
It doesn't.
It's right there.
It's also not west of us where the prevailing winds are.
I never have anybody complain about that smell.
I, I didn't like it at all. That's much better, but, I mean.
Like, like I said, Harry Slut and Kevin LaWocke.
Yeah, they are. They're close.
They're right close.
And we've got one, like I said, a mile and a half.
I would think as a city, even if we did have an agreement in place for a two-mile radius, which we don't have, that if I was in the township and you were a city two miles away from me telling me what I can and can't do, I'd tell you to go pound sand. Um, it's no different than the Met Council and the cities telling little Oseo or you name it what they can and cannot do, and if they don't do what they say, they start withholding funds. I don't agree with that. They have an elected body. They have a county commissioner. They have all the commissioners, but they have their own commissioner, and they have a township board. The smell could come this way. The earth can end tomorrow. We don't know these things, and that's debatable. Um, but I don't think we have a say in this, uh, my personal opinion. Whether I like it or not, I don't think we as a city have a say in this.
He is correct.
I also think we have to keep in mind that our, our community is strongly agricultural.
Yes, the whole county, yes.
The county has a master plan. I have been a beneficiary of the actual fact that that county plan does work. If that plan says they should do it, it should be done. If the county plan says it's not within the realm of that, it shouldn't be. I leave it in planning and zoning and the county's hands.
And I agree with Julie. Julie said it too. If people have a concern, we, we've got our, our representative is here tonight. They should approach him, and he's very approachable, and we'll sit and talk to you. Uh, I'm sure Joy is, is approachable as well. It's her actual constituents where the, the, uh, facility be located. It's, it's up to them.
All right. We'll leave it like that then. That's what we wanted to know.
Okay.
All right. Other than that, we have our city administrator report. Did you want to go over?
She had something, she had it, didn't she?
Um, no, she had on consent agenda.
Oh, that was a consent agenda. The truth and taxation. Uh, Jerries is in this week repairing frostbills. They're gonna come pave?
Yes, I think next week, I saw it on Mueller.
Oh, Mueller's paving, okay.
How many did you have? I see this one right here, but how many others?
Four, four, for sure.
FEMA, well, they haven't paid us yet, but they gave us okay, the approval to go ahead and do.
Oh, good.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, Mindat will not be in this week. They aren't coming till the sixteenth now. Surprise, surprise, yeah.
Well, you said depending on their.
Their contractors, so, yeah. But anyway, well, let's hope, let's hope they come eventually. Jerry Fritz, uh, said they're not gonna be moving ahead with their expansion project now until at least twenty twenty-one, um, which would work out better for us with our project, our street project. So we are meeting with the county tomorrow to discuss their portion of the funding for Hennepin and Carver next year because that's a county state aid highway. Um, we're working on the electric service territory issue yet. Um, our attorney Kathleen Brennan suggested we have Dave Berg Consulting review the proposal from Star just to see if, it came in way, way, way high, like thirty-four mils, and she's thinking it should be down more around, well, she thought eighteen, but we're probably gonna have to come in somewhere in between that. But the, the biggest kicker of this is the timing. There's usually like ten years are these service, these transition agreements, and cities want them to start today. And the co-ops don't want them to start until the first building is built out there, and then it's ten years. Because I said, well, ten years of zero is zero, so you can set the mill rate at whatever you want, and if we don't have anything out there for ten years, and she said, yeah, they might, that's gonna be a, a negotiation point as well. So anyway, um, we're gonna have Dave Berg look at their agreement and see if we can't come to some kind of reasonable terms with, where we may be willing to pay a little higher mill rate, starting date a little sooner because there's nothing planned out there, and, and the landowner out there has made it quite obvious that she's not really interested in selling at this point. So at least we'd have the property in our service territory, and it's within our city limits. So, that's, yeah, anyway, that's that. Um, I met with a representative from MMPA regarding load control. They're meeting with all the member utilities um, to see what kind of interest there is in having them do the load control, you know, with the cities and whatnot. Um, I don't know what other, we were one of the first ones he met with, and I told him, you know, kind of based on past experience and what we've had for the green power signups, I don't think that had them doing load control in Winthrop is gonna be real popular.
So, really dumb question, but load control is allowing them to control the flow of like a high demand time.
Yep, they shut off air, central air units and water softeners, and they randomly shut them off and turn them back on to keep our, the how much demand we have to buy for the city.
Or the other is to, for you and your house. You got a high demand or not, you get a cheaper rate by cutting back.
Right, right.
Basically, the reason that they're talking about this is they're saying that Excel and everybody are, offers that service. And what are you gonna do if somebody comes in and says, I want load control?
Yep.
I mean, we would just have to tell them we can't provide it, but I mean, they're saying, well, then they kind of get a little, but he can say, hell.
I'll take my business elsewhere.
I'll put a solar panel up on my house and I get all the load control I need.
Yeah. And it's not that we, we can't offer it. The system we're putting in, we could eventually go to a load control program. We'd have to upgrade with the tower and then buy the software for the auto read and, and whatnot, but it's quite expensive.
But they're willing to pay some of that.
Some of it, depending on the interest, he said.
Well.
So.
Um, yeah, well.
They're not gonna pay.
A lot of the towns have three, have a lot of problems with three megawatts, so we're not. That far off.
Well, and he said they're not gonna come and upgrade our system for five customers who want to be on load control, so, you know. So they, there's, the next step, I think, is kind of to do kind of a survey to see what kind of interest there is in the system.
What kind of, uh, take rate are they looking at for a community to have interest of wanting to do it, that they feel that it would be feasible to?
He didn't have that information. This was just to kind of see what systems we had and what kind of interest there was, and so I think he was gonna go, he was meeting with all the member cities and take that information back to MMPA and then have a discussion, and then come back to us and say, well, if you do this, we can do this type of deal, so.
What kind of costs are involved for the city or the residents?
There, there, well.
Well, Jenny tells me that tower's thirty thousand, didn't you tell me?
No, it was like eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand.
And then it's twenty thousand dollars a year for maintenance, for software maintenance. But that would allow, like, you could go log, you'd set up a portal, you could watch your usage in real time. You know, yeah, exactly. But we could do time of day billing then, we could do load control. We could do EV, you know, electric vehicle rates, and, and we could do different things with our rates at that point.
The, the reason they're talking about doing it as a group is that they will take care of the software.
For the load control.
For the load control, yeah.
Well, we'd still be paying the twenty thousand a year maintenance.
And the tower.
Initial start, yeah, I don't see the payout for the city on that, that, that's.
Right, so, that's why we started with the drive-by system and, and hoping in time some of those costs will come down, or there'll be better technology, you know.
Not unless we're to get some big industry that came in and they wanted load control, then, you know, something that.
Like a data center?
Yeah.
Hey, we're still in, we're still in.
I didn't turn.
Kelly, I went back to that meeting and said, we're not interested.
I told Fred we were.
Because you said you were not.
I never said that I'm not interested. I would love to see.
Did he say that?
It kind of fell apart at the meeting. I remember that. I was surprised it came back up at EDA.
Yeah.
But it's sort of.
No, because Dale didn't want it in the back, right.
I said you need to put it in the industrial park, not in a residential neighborhood.
Correct, and now they want it in the industrial park, so then.
Originally, you're right, they wanted a lot bigger.
Well, can we do a motion real quick for a resolution to say we're all in favor of this?
Yeah, we are in favor of this.
I will talk to that attorney.
Yeah, we did.
At the MMPA meeting, so he knows we're interested, and they're interested in the industrial park, so, yeah. But I, I haven't heard from him since then either.
You guys are making the attorney cry.
Anyway, moving on.
Wait, I am.
For the record, I am interested in the.
Um, I was at the MMPA conference, um, it was a lot of stuff going on there. Legislative update from the federal government, utilities of the future, uh, division of energy resources, a lot of discussion on electric vehicles, rate considerations and interconnection is a big, big topic of conversation as well. Um, oh, and I have also discovered that the annexation for Jolene Bartle's home at four oh seven West Grant Street was never recorded back in two thousand twelve, so we have to start that annexation process.
Where's Jolene Bartle's house?
It would be Jan Schweckey's house on Grant Street. EDA, I spent thirty-nine hours on EDA-related tasks. I've been working with three potential new businesses in town. It is too early to discuss what they are, but they, or where they will be located, but we've been looking at some buildings, and I've been helping get them connected with, uh, Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund, the Small Business Association, et cetera. Uh, the BP station has been sold. Uh, we have three loan applications for the next EDA meeting for local businesses. For Randy Paganoff, he is buying Dairyland Pest Control and moving that to Winthrop. PMO is, um, is looking either, he, he was looking for some upgrades for inside the building, but now a central air unit went out, so I think he's looking.
Who's, no, he's, he's going up there?
No, no, no. We don't know.
Where's Randy going?
He's moving Dairyland to Winthrop, to his, out of his house.
I don't know where he lives either.
He lives, yeah, down by the Stormsure Pond. He bought the Hoppy's house lot. He's right next to it, where Tim Hoppy used to live.
So where's he moving that to? I'm sorry.
Well, it's just a truck and some equipment, so it's not, yeah. Um, and backdoor hairstyling, put a sidewalk in, and they would like to borrow some money to pay for the rest of that. Um, I've also spent some time working with Drew Schmidt and Aaron to help with the purchase of the grocery store, and things are progressing. I did get the signed purchase agreement today, and I sent that to Aaron. Uh, they're doing inventory on the sixteenth, and that will be the closing day, as far as I, as far as today goes. And he's hoping to only be closed a day or two, and then he will be up and running. He has said there is, it is taking longer to get some of his licenses, like WIC. He probably won't have that till maybe October, but he wants to get open and get running and, you know, start transitioning the old inventory out and get some new fresher stuff in, so.
Don't we still have that sidewalk ordinance where we'll pay?
Yes, and, and that's, that's apply, we, we've applied that. This is for alongside the building and then to the back, so, yeah. I did assess.
You said sidewalk, my brain went, whoa.
No, we did that for her, so, and we're gonna assess her half and.
Thank you.
And that, so, anyway, that's, that's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
Just, just, um, you know, as far as that sidewalk ordinance goes, uh, what it states is that we actually pay for the materials, and then they do it according to our specs.
We pay fifty percent if they do it according to our specs, and then we can, we will, we're willing to assess the other half.
Okay.
Which is generous. No one does not.
Very generous. We're trying to encourage the neighbors.
But it, but it's nice because it does keep up the sidewalks.
Yes.
Okay. Legal, is there anything?
Nothing really, just ordinary month supporting administrator with certain.
Okay.
He does want to, he does want to speak with Dale afterwards about the slush fund?
I wasn't gonna call it a pot o' gold, but, you know.
What about that, did you get that dangerous dog appeal?
I did. I wanna visit with you and Chief.
Okay, okay.
Water and sewer department?
Um, water meters. I talked to the guys from B and R installing them today. They figured they're about forty-five percent done with the residential meters.
How many of them are not the right size?
Just a couple.
Okay.
And then we got those on order already.
Good.
So, for the, for the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The one-inch ones came in today, so.
Who knew?
Yeah, who knew that some of the residential ones were one-inch, but most of them were up and all clean. Um, so yeah, that's water meters, forty-five percent done. Um, skipping down the electric, we figured we're about forty-seven percent done with the electric, so.
Anything on street?
Nope, not besides what Jenny discussed with the frostbills.
Black, flat, cars go on them.
All right. All right, Pete, did you have something for MMPA?
Well, I told Jenny at the last meeting, it was really a gloom and doom. We had about four wind projects put down on the sign off. MISO people increased the costs of interconnections. I know in one case it was a million dollars for the interconnection, and they went to one million eight. And it was an ouch, and so Derek said that this is nuts, and he kind of pulled out of those contracts, but he said there's no wind to be had, I mean, corridors to get it out. I mean, that, that's kind of why MISO is where they're at. They own the parking. So, the other alternative was, is they are looking to put in solar around our communities, and he said that if you know of any hundred acre sites.
Tell them no, Kelly.
About three, three megawatt, uh, they would, uh, contain, uh, putting in some solar, solar gardens. The only question I didn't ask them is, is if we found a hundred acres, and believe it or not, I found one, it's not in our service territory, does that matter?
Yes, that matters.
We would have to build a line into the city or the.
Can we do that?
MMPA, but.
I'm checking with MMPA, with David and Adju.
Okay.
So, that's where that kind of, they're kind of encouraging the cities that any land that you can buy, you better start buying it up because of.
They're not making anymore.
They're not making anymore, yeah. And as far as the, uh, financials are, it's on my computer. Jenny's got a copy on hers, too.
I put it in the packet.
Did you put it in?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did. I got it on my phone.
The unaudited financials, I included.
I, we're sitting pretty good. The big thing is, we were hoping to be within the year if this wind went through totally green, and now that we lost this, we're not, we're not gonna be able to. But on the other hand, a number of people we have buying green power for a dollar. All these people were screaming green, but they won't spend a dollar after a month.
Yeah, I think we have like eight.
So, the project did not go through because of the.
Because of the cost of interconnections.
It went from one million to one point eight.
Well, that was the one in, uh, in Dodge County.
That was just for one.
That was just for one, yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there anything from the fire chief?
No.
Ambulance?
Do you want to talk about, or was?
Did you have anything, Karen?
There's not a lot to discuss right now. I talked to Cheryl a little bit about it today.
Sarah's fiber report?
We have not had a meeting.
Cable commission report is enclosed. Anyone have?
I just handed it.
Oh, yeah, it's here.
Uh, basically, the only thing we discussed at the last cable commission meeting was I'm supposed to pay out the parochial schools and the libraries, their grant funds. So, um, we did get our cameras up and we did get reimbursed for them. Um, there's cameras in the park now too, and I told Melissa to give me that bill and we'll, we'll get reimbursed for those.
Where are all the cameras located?
By the bathrooms.
Yes, uh-huh. Well, not.
Outside.
Outside, yeah. Outside the bathrooms. How many are in the park, too?
Two.
Yeah, cool.
And they're working. Melissa was saying earlier that someone was jumping from table to table or jumping on the tables, and she had the app in her phone and she yelled into it, get off the tables, and they just started looking at it like.
Yeah.
Who's talking?
And then Chris.
Yes, yes, yes.
His kids already heard about it over in Gibbon, yeah.
Chris said that his, his kids already heard about it over in Gibbon, yeah.
Melissa, she had the app on her phone, and the app is on the police phone, so they can monitor the park at any time through the app. And it does have a speaker as well, so it's like a big giant, I've got that Ring doorbell that does the same thing, so it's kind of like that, so.
Well, I keep, I keep getting from the school, and we never paid the six thousand dollars to them for the one that we said, and they said, we never got the camera.
Yeah, we never got the camera.
They said they got one pointed over that way, I said, but that is not the camera.
No.
That wasn't, we agreed.
We had talked about possibly putting something in the downtown area, a couple of cameras, is there anything with that?
You need one behind the old city shop and the brush pile.
Yeah, we could use one.
Because you got a lot of people from out of town bringing brush in there.
And the cable commission allowed each city ten thousand dollars towards cameras, so. Well, the system inside the building was eight thousand dollars, and, but I think how much were these parked? They were only two, two hundred bucks or something.
Two hundred, three hundred dollars.
Yeah, for both of them.
You have to watch a tape to see them or something.
No, you could watch a lot.
They're live.
Just go in the app and watch a lot.
Sounds like fun.
Clifton already, his, Clifton says it's clear as a bell.
Yeah.
He already taught some girls stealing used cigarettes and spitting in the park. And their whole conversation as he's driving up to the park, listening to him talk.
Childhood will never be the same in Winthrop.
Big brother, out there.
Interesting.
That sounds like a deal.
Okay.
We can't use any of that money if we put cameras in the police part of the building, could we?
In the police part?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's for the city.
Mm-hmm.
For the city.
We have money, we have some left of that?
A little bit, maybe a thousand.
They really wouldn't.
It's our money, we can get more. The, the cable commission, the cable commission is funded by the cities, you know, so through our franchise fees, so it's essentially, they're giving us our money back.
So part of that.
So it'd just be adding an extra camera?
Or if we need them, if they're a couple hundred dollars and we could do something.
There's a couple places we could, could use them.
I definitely think we need one behind the city garage.
But these are
Now you don't have internet down there.
She needs one on, stamped and timed, so.
That might be more, yeah, but if there was money available for twenty twenty.
No, they wanted it canceled.
There is it.
They can bounce it. What's left over.
Yeah, they can probably bounce it off the fire department.
Do we want to, um, go ahead and ask, or, or
Yes.
Direct them to, um, put cameras in?
Where?
Your, um, the police, we use one.
Where do you want one?
Well, the difference in that, that we talked about tonight is the one that she was speaking about is recorded.
Right, oh, yeah. Okay, so that's different stuff. But down by the brush pile.
But the money, we could still ask for the money to pay for that camera, it wouldn't be a live app type of camera like we have in the park, this would still go to ask for that money to cover that camera that she spoke of.
I just need a loop with a timestamp, like for our evidence room, I'd obviously
Yeah. That was, how much was, what was that again, do you remember? Twenty-five?
Yeah.
So twenty-five hundred.
And that was a bid from the same gentleman.[1743.41]